Okay, I would like to call to order the Board of Education Budget Committee meeting, Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. It is 6:37 PM. We're at the Nashua High School North boardroom. I'm going to take the role. Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Ziem?
Here.
Ms. Bishop is not here. Whoops, not here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond is not here tonight. She's not feeling well. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Bowden?
Here.
Also with us, we have Mr. Donovan?
Here.
And Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Here.
Ms. Gingras?
Here.
And Mr. Rodriguez is here also. We have three items on our agenda: athletics, technology, and curriculum. We're going to have a short presentation, and after the presentation for each, we'll have question and comment period. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over, turn the floor over to Ms. Gingras for athletics.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for taking time to hear all of these presentations. I know especially for those of you who are new to the Board or coming back to the Board, it's probably a lot of information to take in all at once during this budget process. So, thank you for that. Want to just let you know that you have a lot of information from athletics and several appendices. Some of the appendices are repeats of the information you're going to see in the PowerPoint. I just put them as a separate appendix so that you could see the information bigger. And some of the information is additional information, and there are a few appendices that are just completely supplemental information that you may or may not see in the presentation at all. Each of the slides will reference an appendix if one goes along with that slide, so hopefully that'll help you. So, first question I'd like to talk about is why education-based athletics? This is one of the questions I ask anytime I interview new coaches, is what's the difference between a school-based athletic program and a club team, or an AAU team, or a rec program? So, we talk about this at great length with our coaches, as well as with our student athletes, and I'm not going to read the slides to you, but just kind of point out a few key things. Education-based athletics prepares kids for life after high school. It prepares them whether they're going to college, career, military, the workforce. It extends what they do every day in the classroom. So, education-based athletics are really an integral part of both our middle schools and high schools. They are complementary or co-curricular. They're not extracurricular. I feel very strongly that they're something that, you know, every student gets out of the education-based athletic program. Our programs provide opportunities. The first bullet point there is our vision and our athletic program: pursuing excellence in academics. That is first, thus, education-based athletics. Sportsmanship, and through athletics, while building pride in the school and in the community. Even though we have two high schools and three middle schools, it's all about the community of Nashua. Education-based athletics are important for students to be part of something other than their day-to-day, you know, schoolwork, going home, doing their chores, things like that, being bigger than something bigger than themselves. It also helps students represent their school and their community by putting on that uniform. There's something to be said about having Nashua South, North, Elm Street, Fairgrounds, or Penachuck on their school uniform. And then it also develops emotional, social, physical, and cognitive skills in an application setting. It's not just keep doing this drill forever, but how do you now apply that to a new setting? We focus a lot with our coaches and our students on what does athletics teach you beyond just the sport, and we want them to be good contributing members of society once they leave our schools. Education-based athletics also provides opportunities for all of our students, not just the students who choose to participate in sports. We provide not only opportunities for our students, but also for our community members for lots of different opportunities. We have school pep rallies. It obviously, people come to our games, especially the really big ones, like our Battle of the Bridge, or our Middle School City Championships. We have community members that have long since graduated their own children out of our schools, and they're in the stands every week. For those of you who have been around a long time, you may remember Principal Stancious. He's at a lot of our events still, to this day, and that's really cool. We talk about our core values through athletic competition and teamwork, accountability, commitment, excellence, responsibility, and sportsmanship, and we focus on those in all of our teams. So, our participants, this is data based on last school year, because obviously, this school year is not yet complete, so I don't have that for you. So, at the high school level, and again, I won't read everything, but we have over 1,000 students, almost 1,100 individual students who participate in our programs at school. So, you think we have almost 3,500 students in the two high schools, so we're at about a third. I personally don't think that's enough. I would like to see more of our students participating, but when you think about it in terms of 1,100 students, that's a lot. At the middle school level, we have 951 participants, and I apologize, I didn't get that up there. That's about 500 individual middle school students, and we'll talk a little bit more about our opportunities on our middle schools in a minute. Under the high school, I'd like to talk about, last year, we had 70 NHIAA Scholar Athletes between the two high schools. So, that's an opportunity where these students have to participate in two sports their senior year and maintain a B-plus average, and those students are recognized by the state at a ceremony in the spring, and we'll be bringing about the same number this year. Another thing we do with our seniors is we represent, excuse me, we recognize them with a 12-season award. So, that means they compete all three seasons, all four years of high school, and that is a great, great commitment on their part, as well as their family's part. I had a parent last year who had twin seniors, so she said she should have gotten the 24-season award for her kids. So, one of your appendices has the participation history by sport for both high schools for the past 10 years. So, that's something if you're interested more in the participation. So, our programs at the high school level, we have 32 varsity programs spanning the three seasons. This just gives you a breakdown of the genders. We do have several of our co-ed sports. Specifically, three of those are our unified programs, which give an opportunity for students with and without intellectual disabilities to compete together on the same team. So, that makes up three of our co-ed sports. Our two-spirit teams are co-ed, as well as our golf program. A couple of programs that down the line, we would like to eventually add, but would obviously take some money, is boys volleyball. That is the single most requested program at the two high schools. Every year, we actually host, we are the neutral site for the boys semifinals and finals, and we have kids from the two high schools showing up just because it's such a great sport, and then all of a sudden, my office is flooded with kids. Ms. G, why don't we have this? The other thing is a junior varsity ice hockey program, and we'll talk about our ice hockey teams a little bit more towards the end, but for the past five years, North has partnered with Sauhegan High School out of Amherst in a co-op team, and for the past four years, Nashua South has partnered with Palom High School for a co-op team there. So, we haven't had enough players to have our own teams, so we've had to partner with other towns. Over the past few years, our North and South participants have greatly increased, so we've been running a small JV team for that, playing in a league out of Salem, where I've been, you know, picking and scraping money from here and there to pay for that. So, it's something that I think would support our varsity program if we could add that in. Do you want to take questions now, or just at the end? Ms.?
We're going to save our questions for the end of the presentations.
Okay. So, in our middle schools, we, middle school's a little bit different because we only have one team per gender, per sport. Unlike at the high school level, some of our, most of our teams have a varsity and a JV. A few of our teams also have a freshman. So, at the middle school level, we have 12 programs that operate in each of the middle schools, and then we have one field hockey team that operates all three schools on the same team. So, that's a unique situation, and because of that, they can't qualify for playoffs at the end of their season because we violate one of the league rules by combining the three schools together, but it still provides them an opportunity to play. Few things for future consideration for the middle schools is, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we have unified sports at the high school. We have soccer, basketball, and track. This season, right now, in between winter and spring, we are piloting a unified basketball program at our middle schools, and yesterday, we had the first-ever middle school unified basketball game, and it was just unbelievable to see those kids out there. So, it's something I'd really like to put into place. We have this great opportunity between winter and spring at the middle school. There's about seven weeks of no activities, so not only would it provide an opportunity for our students with disabilities, but it would also provide that opportunity for some of our other students to gain some leadership skills. So, that's a big one. Another thing at the middle school that I've been talking about for several years is the addition of B-teams. Much like you would have a JV team at the high school, we currently are cutting more students than we are keeping in several of our middle school programs, and we're finding that they never come back. They get cut as sixth or seventh graders, and that's it. They're done with that sport for their school career. So, that's something that we'll talk about again. And then at the middle school level, the biggest request we get is for lacrosse teams. Lacrosse is, as many of you may know, a growing sport on both the girls' and the boys' side, and there are a lot of teams in our league that do have lacrosse teams, so we would have opponents to play. With our teams come coaches, so this is just a little bit of a breakdown for you of how many coaches of each type we have. We have 129 paid coaches at the high school level, varying, the only assistant freshman coach we have is in our football programs, but varsity, JV, freshman, and assistant coaches, all along the way. Recruiting and retaining quality coaches is becoming increasingly more difficult. Over the past several years, I've averaged hiring 55 to 60 coaches a year. Takes a lot of time, and right now, we still have, we currently have 15 openings, eight of them for the spring season that starts in 19 days, and we're struggling with, we have these openings, but there are no applicants for several of them. So, it's a struggle. So, we have 129 at the high school level, and then we have 40 high coaches at the middle school level. So, a total of 169 coaches in our district, again, on payroll, who receive a stipend that doesn't even begin to touch the number of volunteers we have. Few coaching positions for future consideration. Obviously, if we were ever to get that boys volleyball program, or an official JV ice hockey team through the operating budget, we would need coaches for them. The other thing, coaching has changed over the past 10, 15, 20 years. Some people would tell you over even the last three to five years, and it's becoming more demanding. We talk about social-emotional learning, and all of the safety concerns and things like that. So, one thing I'd like to do at the high school level is to bring onboard a paid assistant varsity coach for each of our teams that does not have one. Some of these programs have, between the varsity and the JV, they could have anywhere from 50 to 75 kids, and there's only two paid positions for that. So, bringing that onboard would be helpful. At the middle school level, again, if we add those additional programs, they would need coaches. For the unified, I would suggest a head coach and an assistant. Again, because you're working with some of those special education students, it would be helpful to have more than just one adult supervising them. So, to round out my staff, in addition to the 169 coaches, we also have nine additional staff, in addition to myself. Each high school has an athletic department secretary. Each high school and each of the three middle schools has an athletic coordinator, who helped me with the day-to-day operations of the department and overseeing events. And then each of the high schools has an equipment manager. The equipment manager at South is split between two people, so it's an extra person, but it's still only the one position. One position that I would love to be able to add to our department, either on a part-time basis, or a stipended position, or even full-time, would be a person who is solely responsible for marketing, social media, and fundraising, specifically for athletics. As you know, as we're going to talk about the numbers in a few minutes, it's very expensive to run programs, especially with all of the moving parts that go on, and these are three really important items for the success of any organization. So, again, I know this is very lofty and probably far away, but something that would be helpful. So, as we move into the actual budget, I know that you've been doing these for a couple of weeks now, so I know you're aware that the budget has locations, it has programs, and then it has the accounting lines. So, in the high school, or actually, the whole athletic department budget, we have four locations. So, we're partly in the administrative location, inside of South, inside of North, and then all of the middle schools is in Elm Street. So, if you happen to look at Fairgrounds and Penachuck and are like, "Why don't they have any athletics?", they do, just for simplicity of the budget, it's all in the Elm Street. So, it's important to know. Then our program lines are our sports. So, each of our sports program budget includes coaching stipends, officials, transportation, that's a big one, and then where applicable, rentals, game staff, and police detail. The items there on the right are not included in each program line. So, if you look at the ice hockey line, for example, you're not going to see anything about equipment, or uniforms, or athletic training supplies. That is in the general athletic budget, not broken down into each sport. And then there are some items that also fall under the administrative line, or in the special revenue, or the athletic trust. So, it's just kind of helping to understand where all of the different money comes from. The other thing to note is those five sports listed at the bottom, you will only see in the budget for boys. We do have those programs for girls, but again, for the simplicity of the budget, they travel together, they have the same schedule, they have the same officials. So, we merge them together. So, when you look at those five sports, the boys program, it does include both the boys and the girls. Very similar with the middle school. Middle school's a little bit simpler. We don't have any rentals, we don't have any police detail usually, or there was one other thing. Game staff. Most of the time, it's just our coaches and our athletic coordinators that are there. So, that's very similar. And then again, for cross-country and outdoor track, you will only see a boys program. You will not see the girls. One other note before we get to the numbers. For the middle school, when you're looking at this year's budget compared to last year's budget, you're going to see a line that has like a negative $30,000 decrease. I did not cut $30,000 from my budget. It was just shifted to a different program line. So, I'll show you where that is, but just to note that when you see these two lines, it's the same pool of money. So, this is the breakdown between the four locations: the administrative, the North program, the South program, as well as the middle school program. Again, just a reminder, the three middle schools are all in the 05 location of Elm Street. I'm a visual person, so I think this helps a little bit. As you can see, the two high schools take up the biggest part of the pie, the biggest part of the budget. Middle school is a little less than half, maybe 40% of each of the high school budget, and then the administration. By accounting line, this just gives you the breakdown, the numbers, where it's broken up, and where you see the biggest increases. We will talk about the big increases one at a time throughout. The bottom line there that's labeled "all other lines", those are very small, minor lines that only altogether make up 5.5% of the budget. So, rather than itemizing each one of those, I just left those kind of grouped together. Again, the visual for that. So, these are the accounting lines. You can see that stipends, transportation, wages, and officials make up about 80% of our budget. Most of that, we cannot control. So, now, I'll walk you through some of the increases. So, wages full-time, this is in the administrative location, the 01 location. This is 100% contractual obligation for the three full-time employees. That's myself and the two high school secretaries. Part-time wages, this is small adjustments. When I do my budget, for those of you who don't know, I'm a former statistics and math teacher, so numbers and I get along really well. So, I look back at the past three years expenditures, the past five years expenditures, I've even combed back to when North and South split, and look at the averages and things like that to see, you know, do I really cut 2,000 for that when next year, I'm just going to add it back? So, last year, I cut 9.5% out of this budget line. So, with little expenditure changes, we just need to add a little bit back in there. And one other thing, when we look at our officials line, if an official is an employee of the city, they get paid out of part-time wages, they don't get paid out of the officials' line, because they're an employee of the city versus being a contracted official. So, that's a little different. Next one, these are our coaching stipends that went up 1%. This is also a contractual obligation. The teacher's contract allows for a slight increase based on experience for our coaches, and we also do that for the athletic coordinator and equipment manager. Contract services, this looks like a really big increase, but it is not. A little bit later, you'll see a 13% decrease in another line, because we moved money for our online cognitive baseline concussion testing to contract services. It just made more sense. It wasn't really a medical supply, it was more a company we contract with. So, again, it looks like a big shift, an increase here, but it's not. It was just shifting money again. We also are contracting with a new neuropsychologist out of Dartmouth-Hitchcock, who does all of the interpretations of those testing, either baseline or post-injury. So, that is also included here. Next year will be the third year of our three-year contract with our athletic training services as well. This was the equipment money move shift that I was telling you about before. So, it looks like one line has a really big decrease, and the other has a really big increase, but it's really only $1,000, and that's just to account for everything's going up around us. Rentals, little bit of an increase here. Part of this increase is due to our gymnastics programs. Our coaches have done a really great job growing those programs. We went from having four gymnasts at one school and six at another, to both schools had over 13 gymnasts. So, where we practice is now going to charge us as two separate teams rather than one. So, that's part of that. Again, all of the others, the ice hockey, the mountain rental, and the pool rental, it varies from year to year based on how many home events are we going to have, how far do we go into the playoffs, do you need more practice time because you make it further into the playoffs, or you're hosting more meets, or things like that. So, that's why that fluctuates. Last year, we went over budget in all but the gymnastics rental line, and this year, we're on target to do it again. So, that's why I felt the need to increase this one. Transportation, this is the most uncertain part of my budget. Dan and I talk about transportation a lot. As you can see, over the past three years, we pay an hourly rate, so we pay the field trip rate, the charter rate, so we pay by the hour. So, tomorrow, I'm sending a busload of kids to Whitefield, New Hampshire, two and a half hours away. So, you have to account for two and a half hours up, two and a half hours back, how long does the event take, things like that. So, it's hard, because when it's time to budget, we don't always have our schedules for next year, don't really know, are we going to Keene, and to Rochester, and to Dover all in the same year? Are we not? So, it really fluctuates. So, this one is always going to go up, I feel, and each year, I go through this one pretty easily. And the last increase is that other line, which just, again, is only 5.5% of the entire budget, small increase and decreases based on expenditures, and then it just gives you a little breakdown of what is included there, down there at the bottom. Couple of decreases I can tell you about. This was that 13% decrease out of medical supplies that got shifted to the contract services. So, again, we actually decreased it more than we were increasing it. And then the other one is in our budget, there's some negative numbers, because we get money from other sources, and one of those sources is our co-op hockey teams. So, we are the lead school for both co-op teams, so we budget it, we pay the coaches, we pay for everything, and then we bill them at the end of the season for a portion of that. So, we're anticipated to get more money next year. These are those negatives I was telling you about. So, one of them is our athletic user fees, which we'll talk about more in a couple minutes. The co-op team, so that's where you can see that what we are budgeted to get this year, what we're budgeted to get next year, that's the biggest difference here. And then also, our unified sports program, part of, when we added those to the operating budget, each year, both high schools participate in the Penguin Plunge, and we get a 35% kickback of everything that our students raise, and it goes directly to the Penguin Plunge, excuse me, it goes directly to our unified sports programs. Few things that are not in the operating budget. So, everything we've talked about so far is operating budget: the stipends, the transportation, the officials, uniforms, and awards, and large-scale equipment purchases are not in the operating budget. Our uniforms and our awards come out of our special revenue fund, which the only income into that fund is our gate receipts. So, we charge admission at football and girls' and boys' basketball, that's the only source of income for those things. So, if people don't come to our games, we're not getting as many uniforms. And then the large-scale equipment purchases, those come out of the expendable trust, which the income into the trust is, that's where we put any donations that we get. So, if we get large donations, that goes there, as well as if a team does a big fundraiser that uses our facilities. For example, the Chick-fil-A Holiday Christmas Tournament. They're using our gyms, they're using our basketballs, they're using our facilities, a portion of their profit from that would go into the trust to then replace all those My least favorite topic: athletic user fees. If I could win Powerball, so I could stop charging people to play sports, I would do that in a heartbeat. This is the history since 2011, when athletic user fees were put into place. In 2014, we started accepting payments through PayPal, credit card, online registration, so that's why all of a sudden, there's like change, as opposed to it being exact dollar amounts. And then in 2016, we significantly changed the user fee structure. So, you can see, the first column here is what is in the operating budget, what I'm expected to come up with, or what we're expected to come up with in user fees throughout all three seasons at both high schools. Excuse me, I take that back. That's the second column, what we're budgeted. First column is what was actually transferred. So, what did we actually collect, what did we actually deposit, what did, at the end of the year, Dan transfer into the operating budget? And you can see that since 2011, last budget cycle was the first time we met what we were supposed to. We actually exceeded it a little bit. And you can see, there's a lot of information in your appendices about the user fees. So, Appendix K shows you a breakdown of what is charged per sport, and the history, this is that same history. This slide shows you, we do have, if a student is on free or reduced lunch, they are automatically waived their athletic user fee. Parents can also apply for a financial hardship. So, that's the first column. So, that's the percentage of students each year that are getting that waived. The next column is, we offer a three-season athlete. We talked a little bit ago about our 12-season athletes as seniors. If they are a three-season athlete, they do not have to play for, pay for a spring sport. So, they have to be in good standing, finish the season, fall and winter, and then they don't have to pay for spring at all. We do have some students who are dual-sport athletes, so they play two sports in the same season, they only have to pay for one of them. So, that gets waived there. And then if a student is a manager of a team, they're not getting a uniform, they're not getting, they're getting benefits, but they're not getting the full benefits as playing on the team, so we don't charge them either. And then the final And then the final column there is some things just fall through the cracks. No matter how many times we ask people to pay their bills, sometimes they just don't. This year's, obviously, we haven't collected the rest, and we collect a lot of fees during senior week when kids want their prom tickets and their yearbooks and stuff like that. So we get a lot of those during that time. So there's a lot of information in your appendices. M, N, O, and P are the last four years by sport, how many participants, how many were, fees were waived, how many were collected, and how many were unpaid, and you can see that by sport for each one. So just to finish up here, talking, we talked a lot about the numbers for this year, but again, looking to the future, people are probably tired of hearing me talk about this one. B-teams and coaches' stipends, those are two things I talk about every year. Our stipends are part of the teacher's contract. So when they go to negotiations, only 45% of our coaches teach in the district. So when they look at that, that's not an important part of teacher negotiations for the contract. So unfortunately, completely understand why it happens, but unfortunately, the coaching stipends in Nashua have not changed in at least 20 years. And I asked Dan that question, he was great to get me that information. He was able to go back to a contract from 20 years ago, and the stipends were the same. It may have been even longer than that, we just don't have any proof. We are the lowest in our coaching stipends of surrounding communities and of our Division One schools. So we have fewer positions and we pay less. And this significantly, again, impacts the ability to recruit, hire, and retain some of our coaches. I have offered coaching positions to people, and they have laughed at what I told them the stipend was going to be and said, no, thank you. So the additional coaching positions, we've already talked about, the assistant varsity coaches, and then the coaches for the new programs if they ever came to be. Again, boys volleyball, JV ice hockey, unified basketball, and lacrosse. Our co-op teams, we talked about these a little bit. We are committed for the next cycle with the NHIAA, with our governing body at the state. We are committed through the 2022 school year. There's a very real possibility that that will be the end of our co-op teams, that the two schools will be able to have enough participants and be able to furnish, furnish a team, support a team each on their own. So that could potentially be a $12,000 to $15,000 increase per high school. So it's something to just kind of keep in mind for the few years. Middle school B-teams, last slide. As I mentioned earlier, we have one team per gender, per sport at our middle schools. There's a lot of data for you in Appendix R that will show you the number of students who are trying out for teams and the number of students who are staying in the program. And in many cases, especially boys' basketball and volleyball, we are cutting many, many more kids than we are keeping, and they're not coming back. The more that we can do to keep middle school students involved, whether it be athletics or music or drama or any other clubs, but the more that we can do to keep them involved, the better. So basically, adding B-teams would double the operating budget for those five sports. And I'm not picking on these five sports and eliminating others, but these are just the five that the data is showing that this is where we would need to implement B-teams And that's it.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of information in there.
Yes.
And I appreciate, do we have any comments or questions regarding athletics? Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Do we pay Conway Ice?
We do.
And how much do we pay them?
We pay them, that is in here. Easier if I just slide back up this way to the rental page. So right there. So we pay $155 per sheet of practice ice. We get 50 minutes, three days a week, and we get one hour, one day a week for each of the two schools. So that's eight practices a week, and that could be up to 15 weeks. And then we pay $420 per game sheet. So each team plays 18 games, so you assume half of those would be at home. So each school would have nine home games, so that's 18, depending if they have any playoff games, any scrimmages, things like that. So last year, the hockey was about $23,500. This year, we are going, it's going to be more than that.
Do we get a discount? I mean, people might think that might be a silly question, but do we get a discount for Conway Ice?
I believe we pay less than other people.
I'd like to get an answer to that because they pay us a buck a year on the leased land. Because when we built Conway Ice, and I was on the board yesterday, my plaque was there from 2003, my name is on it, they leased that land from us for a buck a year. And I know they want, they've always wanted another sheet of ice. And I mean, it's really a great giveaway with Conway Ice with the city because it's city land, and it costs us money to be there, to skate there. And they don't pay us any, you know, my attitude is they could buy the land at fair market value, and then we could pay them. But I'd like to know what the real, what the cost is outside for other people to come in. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else who has a, I can see the need for that, those B-teams. I know that biddy basketball is big in Nashua, and a lot of those kids, they try out for the teams, and there's just not enough spots for them.
Right.
That's just one sport alone that I see that need for. So I think it's a great idea to start up those B-teams, especially at the middle school.
And there's different philosophies around the B-teams. I personally believe they should be treated like a JV team at the high school level. You know, you're working hard, you're learning, everybody's playing, things like that, preparing yourself to make the older team in the later years.
Ms. Zim.
I don't have a question, but I would just like to thank you for the service that you bring to our children and our city, our community. It obviously is a work of love on your part, and I'm always delighted to see people who love our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Brown?
So yeah, I have a list of questions. But first of all, I want to commend you for your awesome bookkeeping and visual aids. I really appreciate that for me, and half of the questions you were able to answer as they went along. So thank you so much for that. And I agree with you 100% that it is, that sports for kids is a way to keep them engaged both academically and physically, creates a lifetime of learning and wanting to continue being physically active as they get older, and then also engages even the kids that aren't participating in those sports for homecoming and all those kinds of things. So I think it's definitely worth the investment most of the time. So I have a, my first question's going to be about the social media marketing fundraising person.
Yeah.
Is that, would that be, you think you have a need for a full-time individual for that, or would that be something that, there's been talk of the district wanting to add a marketing director or something like that? Would that be a separate position or combined?
I probably can't answer that for you in terms of how that could connect with the district person. I think it would be important, you know, again, just thinking about the amount of time I spend trying to keep up, and I'm only on Twitter. Like, I haven't even touched Instagram or Facebook or the new TikTok, whatever that does. I haven't even touched any of those things, nor has any of my staff, because we just don't have time. It's not possible. So I think, you know, adding in the fundraising piece of that, I think that in and of itself could also turn into a very large part of that position. You know, I don't know, I envision someone doing that at the district level. That would be a full-time job, if not more, for the district alone, whereas although my department is within the district, it, someone said to me once, athletics is the front porch of your district. That's what people see, just like your music programs and your drama programs. That's what people see. When you drive into either one of our schools, the first thing you see is our athletic fields.
On our website, it's the main feature on the website.
Exactly. Our championship volleyball teams on the first video on the new website. That's what people see. So I think that position could potentially start out as a part-time position, but then grow into bigger things.
So that actually is going to transition my next question with mentioning the trust. Has there ever been anyone focused on a capital campaign for that? Or is there anyone out there writing grants or looking for big money from Dick's Sporting Goods or something like that for those kinds of contributions?
That would be a great thing for that new person to do. We have done those, we have, and Dan could probably speak to this a little bit as well. When Stellows turf was replaced, that was part of an NFL grant that came in through that. I know there have been some great donors and things like that. We have looked out for grants, but again, there are only so many hours in the day, and yeah, I'd love to bring in more money. I'd love to bring in enough money that the first thing we can do is drop athletic user fees. I'd love to see that because I personally believe if we're able to drop the athletic user fees, our participation numbers will also increase.
Can I keep going? Thank you so much. And so, sorry, this is also more about money and different income sources. The booster programs, so, you know, we were walking in, we got to see the athletic boosters out here working hard. Where, does that bring in very much of a source, or is that more sports-specific?
So we, each high school has an overarching booster program. Their primary focus is twofold. One, create buzz in school spirit. Ms. Timmons is sporting her new attire this evening. So that's one thing. And again, that's about everybody. That's not just about the athletes. That's why a lot of their attire is just about the school and doesn't even say athletics on it. The other part, the reason they raise money is to provide scholarships for our student athletes. So for instance, I know last year, Nashua South gave out 13 $500 scholarships. So that's their purpose, is what the overarching group is doing, the spirit, and then the scholarships at both schools. Each team does their own fundraising, and their own fundraising can do things as much as swag for the kids or supplemental equipment that, like North has a basketball shooting machine. I don't have extra money to buy that out of the operating budget or the trust. So they fundraise for that, and they get that. Our football team has some tackle wheels and some new tackling dummies and things like that, that they fundraise and do that. So that falls under the booster umbrella, but each team sort of does their own thing. So that's something, again, I'd love to tackle that, let's do one big fundraiser as a group, as a community, and I'll share in the benefits.
I guess my last is kind of a couple of questions together about middle school programs, and I think the B, this is kind of a soapbox for myself as well. There is so much research specifically about middle school girls. When they, they come out for these teams, they put themselves out there, they don't make the team because you can't have 40 kids on a basketball team, nobody gets to play. And then they never try out again, and then they, some of them haven't even hit puberty yet, and so they haven't even really hit their athletic peak. And, you know, there's so much research about what that does to a kid's self-esteem and then their long-term physicality of life. So the B-team, I really want to find a way to make this work, people. So within that, moving on to middle school programs.
May I interrupt you for one second?
Oh, yeah.
I apologize. The B-teams, I think we all agree that they're very, very important. Obviously, it takes money to operate those. It also brings additional challenges, as we talked about already, how many coaches I hire, how many open positions I have that don't have applicants. So that's one challenge. If we add these teams, I, we need people stepping up in the community or in our teaching staff or in our district staff to help coach some of these teams. And the other thing is facilities. You know, our basketballs, our three middle schools, six o'clock, they're kicked out of their gyms. So that's another piece. So they're so important, we have to work through some of the challenges at the same time.
So honestly, we're on the same wavelength because my next question was about facilities.
Oh, perfect.
And specifically, I know that right now, the field hockey middle school team is, they bus all the kids to Penachuck from the city. Is that because of lack of space? Because obviously Elm Street doesn't have any outdoor fields, or is that because there's, they need that for the numbers?
No, it's, so the, we need it for the numbers because none of the three middle schools could support its own field hockey program. They just, we're getting about 25 girls with the three schools combined. So if we divided that, none of the three schools would be able to support it. And then we bus them to Penachuck because Penachuck has the rectangular field for soccer inside the track, but then we put the field hockey field in the outfield of the baseball field. So that's why we're able to do that at Penachuck, where Fairgrounds doesn't have that ability, and as we know, Elm Street doesn't have any fields. So that's why we chose to put it at Penachuck.
All right. And my last question would be about middle school lacrosse, if that was a program that we could eventually bring in, because they have a pretty substantial club program here in Nashua. We actually probably solidly compete through the state, just for reference. The, would that be a combined team also probably, or are you thinking?
To start out, it might have to start that way, but I think eventually, I think, I think lacrosse is so popular right now that I think in short term, it would be able to sustain itself in each of the three middle schools. And again, and a lot of that future stuff, I know it's not all coming in this year's budget, and I can even see that it's probably not coming in the next five years, but I'd like to at least throw things out so that we can start thinking about them.
All right. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. Zim? And then Ms. Oden.
I'll try not to soapstand, but I have to say, in hearing your comments, it, the question comes to mind is, how many of our students are children who don't get to play because of resources? And that's the bottom line. How many of those children would be productive in their lives if they were able to be in a constructive program as opposed to running loose on the streets? And that's the sadness that I sit here and feel when you're talking about what we could do and what we're probably going to do. It's, it makes being on the board very difficult. Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Oden.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jengris, for that presentation. It was, it was excellent, as you always give them. You said, I think the spring season starts in a few days.
19 days.
19 days. And you're shy, how many coaches?
Eight coaches for the spring.
What, what happens if you don't find those coaches?
So we've had, we've run into this in some of our other seasons, namely usually in the fall. We delay the start of the season, and then I beg people, I knock down doors, and somehow, some way, I find people to fill them at the last minute. Sometimes, they are more managers and supervisors than they are true coaches, but at that point, it's still providing that opportunity for those students.
Well, well, thank you for that, and thank you for all you do for the district. I don't know how many people realize, but Ms. Jengris was named New Hampshire Athletic Director of the Year this past year, which was richly deserved, and I think if they probably had one for New England, you would deserve that because I believe out of all the athletic directors at the high school level and middle school level, you probably supervise more teams than any other athletic director in New England.
Possibly.
So thank you for all you do for so many. Thank you for this, this report, and I think the middle school that you've presented, the opportunity for those kids, it's a critical time. And, you know, I would, it's tough budget season, but boy, that would be money well spent. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. And again, I know, I know it's a lot of money, and as I said, maybe it's not something we do this year, but maybe as we're planning for the restructuring of our three middle schools, maybe it's something we can try to figure out how to make happen once we have the three, the three schools in the redistricting and the new school and things like that.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. You said the students have to leave the middle schools at six, six o'clock?
Yeah, during the winter season for biddy basketball.
Oh, biddy basketball. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you so much. Athletics is so important. The benefits are social and health and wellness, and we're going to be doing, so I hope when we, we keep in mind when we renegotiate the teacher's contract about, about those, the need for, for coaches. And I hope, I hope that the negotiating team takes notice about that on, on both sides so that we can really do something, because athletics is so important to the health and wellness of our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have technology.
Greg Rodriguez.
Are you all set?
I am all set.
Okay, great. I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Rodriguez.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Greg Rodriguez. I'm the new Director of Technology for the Nashua School District. Today, we'll be presenting on the technology budget. Just a quick overview, this is what our staff currently looks like right now. It's a staff of 14. We are in the process of hiring or reviewing applications for the Assistant Director of Technology. We have one network administrator, one programmer, one system administrator, an I4C coordinator, an office manager, and seven assistant systems administrators. The assistant systems administrators take care of the desktop issues at the schools and they're a mobile group. So, we have one at each high school, just because the schools are so big. And then we have one at Elm Street Middle School because of the size of that school as well. So, the Department of Technology, at least where I would like to go is to offer technology that promotes learning, teaching, and productivity with an up-to-date infrastructure and compute with our computing devices. Right now, that's, it's hopefully going to be the case because as I'll show in the future slides, our computing devices are aging out. So, we want to help the building administrators gain an understanding, you know, about teaching and their needs. We want to know what they want, what they need to help teaching, learning, and, you know, and see if we can add additional systems to really improve where, you know, what they do in their building. So, we want to improve ease of use for teachers and staff from our systems. And we want to assist in the improvement of opportunities for our students to access the latest educational tools, software, devices, programs. You know, with the budget we have right now, I think we're moving towards that direction, at least when we move towards a technology plan. This is the things I want to outline with that. And we also want to provide a safe digital learning environment because we all have these devices and especially with such a vulnerable age where students are right now, we want to make sure that the devices that they use and the information that they have and access to each other, that they're using these devices safely. Rational for the budgets or our contract services, these are, we have a network administrator right now, but these are really high levels, like, that require expertise to do these things. So, these include network support, specialty wiring projects, and e-rate services for computer software. This is mostly for licensing and in terms like Microsoft and the educational software that we use right now. And we also want to upgrade our current email infrastructure and to, one of the things that we realize right now is that our current email, a lot of people complain that they don't have enough space. And that is 100% the case. So, we are looking for a solution to, it would feel like an unlimited amount of email that they have. Instead of having the 200 megabytes assigned, they would have 50 gigabytes, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it is a ton of space and it's almost impossible to fill that up in the lifetime of work. So, our computer equipment is definitely aging and I'll talk about that later. But we want to buy, we want to replace our aging computer equipment by a small number of spare access points. Access points are what we use for our Wi-Fi in these buildings. Some of them die and they need to be replaced. So, those are the things we definitely want to look at. And professional development. So, we want to invest in our staff to learn, improve their skill set. So, our technology is improving every day and we realize that. And we need to increase our capacity to actually provide these skills to fix and improve our infrastructure. So, at least where I'm going, we need to invest in our staff to do that. This is last year's operating budget compared to this year's. The difference is, I believe it's salary, is the only really difference that you'll see. I'll go through the appendices right now. So, these are the students, or these are the students and staffs per grade level. So, this is what we're currently seeing. These are all our users. The lion's share of our users are at the elementary schools, then the middle schools, and then the high schools. And the same thing for our staff as well. So, I put an asterisk because some of these staffs do flow between buildings. So, it's, and they are district staff. So, it's not fair to actually categorize which staff is where because we do have a lot of floating users. And this is where it gets a little hairy with our Chromebooks and our desktops. So, our Chromebook in expiration, so September 2021 is when we're going to see the largest amount of Chromebooks going end of life. And I'm going to explain end of life in a bit. But in September 2021, we have 3,140 Chromebooks that will not be, we will not be able to use. So, back in December, we did get notice from Google that the expiration did change from June 2020 to September 2021. So, that gave us, it helped us, but it still didn't change the problem that we're facing. Chromebooks are going, are expiring, and we need to figure out a way to replenish them. In our desktops, it's a little different because Microsoft will still provide support for these devices. However, we have 1,046 desktops right now that are in the six to 10-year-old range. And that is, in tech-wise, that's ancient technology. With the amount of software that is new and the hardware that we have, it's hard for them to speak to each other and to keep up a fast computing environment. There are Band-Aids that we can put on these, in these computers, like different types of hard drives in memory, but it still doesn't change the fact. It's like putting a Ferrari engine in a Ford Tempo. So, it doesn't change anything. It's just, we're still using aging equipment. So, this is what we currently have right now. It's an HP 6300. This is what we're mostly seeing compared to the HP 600G4 computers, which have an excellent, an excellent array of equipment inside compared to the HP 6300s. What we're seeing is a slower performance, complaints from staff, and it's, you know, the repairs, the time invested to replace and repair these HP 6300s, the cost of the parts and the time to repair are all, you know, reasons why we should replace it besides it being, you know, old. So, the priority areas that we really want to tackle are the labs at all three levels, the classroom computers, and in offices. So, these HP 6300s, the 1064 are scattered throughout the district. So, but as you'll see, that, as I can tell you, that these are becoming more and more of a problem every year. So, when I first started here in 2016, they were even old back then. For Chromebooks, so, every Chromebook has an auto-update policy. And what this means is that Google sends out security updates, firmware updates, and software updates for every Chromebook. And what we discovered is that these do have a, they do have an expiration date, just like milk. So, with these, what we can see is that the automatic updates will no longer be provided for a specific, for two specific models, an HP 11 G3 and G4 coming in 2021. These will no longer receive technical support from Google and devices may not work as expected because the hardware can't support the software. So, with no updates, no security, will be no security updates or bug fixes. This also affects our testing environment because we use Chromebooks so much for testing and learning. I want to emphasize the learning and the teaching part, not just the testing, but it's just like the immediate knee-jerk reaction we get from staff is, can I still test on these devices? The answer is no, because we do manage these Chromebooks. And for us to manage these Chromebooks, and if they're not in our management console, we wouldn't be SIP compliant because we wouldn't be able to give the students, we can't give students a device that they can just go willy-nilly on the internet without us filtering it and providing security to them. So, we would be in violation right there. And according to Google, they may still work, but functional limitations, we can't go off a maybe. So, we got to plan, we got to plan ahead for that. You know, as long-term devices become less functional and security and bug fixes, these, this leaves the district very vulnerable and I think frustration would rise as the years go on. So, the thing is with the, after this, after the new types of Chromebooks coming out, the auto-update policy will be around six years, which is higher than what we're seeing right now. So, we, it's around four years right now for this current model, but after this, it's going to be six years. However, these Chromebooks are not built like laptops. They're built like a flimsy computer. So, looking for a refresh rate of every three to four years is the direction that I feel that we should go because of cost of repair. You know, if we're going to replace a screen that costs $45 for a $165 Chromebook, after three years, it just doesn't make sense to do it. You might as well buy new. So, because you're not getting as much out of it. So, we're going to move on to infrastructure upgrades. Right now, we are in the phases of, we have one more, a few more days left of our e-ray bits for our existing switch infrastructure. Most of our switches are 13 to 18 years old. That's not good. And we want to replace our, replace these older switches with next-gen switches. Without getting too much in the minutia, these switches will allow us to upgrade our wireless to a more high-density access point, which high-density means it could allow up to 100 devices per access point. So, these access points, one is right there in the corner of the room, these allow us to get on the internet. And right now, they typically hold 30 devices. Well, that's great that they can hold 30 devices, but that's not a realistic number for us right now. That's more of a conference room, I would say. Because each class, if we have 25 Chromebooks in a high school or a middle school, each kid has a cellphone as well. And they're most likely on the wireless as well. And the access points don't care what device is on, as long as a device is on there. So, if a student is on the guest wireless, it doesn't matter if a student wants to get a Chromebook on there. So, it's a constant, like, kicking off and jumping on, which isn't good. But the high-density access points would allow us to provide seamless connectivity at higher speeds. So, that's, with these improvements, we can, we would see a tremendous, tremendous amount of just productivity, you know, in the classroom. And it would provide us with, it would provide us a lot less headaches in the technology department. And we're going to do that at the high schools too. So, phase two of our infrastructure upgrades, right now at our elementary schools and our middle schools, we currently have, and I brought props, so I feel like a prop comedian right now. We have, it's called split pair cabling. So, as you'll see on the diagram on the bottom, there's an X next to it. So, what is, to save money about 20 years ago, somebody came up a really great idea to put one cable for two connections. What that does, it's an economic way of doing it, but it's not for the long game. This is very dated technology and you're sacrificing just bandwidth because you're sharing one stream of data for two connections. Our goal is to make it one cable for one connection. So, right now, what we have in our elementary and middle schools are these right here. These are patch panels and these would connect all of our devices. It doesn't matter if it's wireless or not, a wire still goes back to one of these right here. This one has never been used and it's about 20 years old. And it's never, like, so, just to put it in perspective, these sit in our network closets and depending on what season it is, it can be around 80 to 120 degrees, depending on that, because they run hot. Just this device alone, that's how brittle this plastic is without being subjected to heat. And this is what we have in the elementary and most of the middle schools right, and all the middle schools right now, except for Amherst. Amherst was the one that was done. What we would like to replace that with are these right here. These are upgraded patch panels, which would allow us to do one connection for each individual port.
How long does that last?
These last, these are actually metal. So, and the plastic isn't as brittle. So, these are, these will last much longer. And that's such, this is very, this is updated technology, just what's used everywhere that is not used anywhere. So, even when we talk to vendors, they, they're kind of amazed that we still have these things at the schools that, so, this is what we're looking to, you know, eventually fix. This is the patch panels I was just talking about right now, but if you want to pass that around, Dan. But it's really, it's as brittle as coffee. It really is. Like, you just push your finger right through it and it's incredible. So, this is what our goal is for all of our schools to look like. To us, that's like heaven because it's ease of use, it's neat. So, that's what we want to achieve. We feel that we can do that through this, at least in the middle schools now, through the, hopefully through the middle school projects. The Nashua high schools, the high schools are fine. I know someone said the high schools are fine, but it's our elementary schools and our middle schools that are suffering with this right now. And this is, it's not in, in theory, it's an easy fix, but there's, it's very manual to do this, this type of work, especially for all of our connections throughout the elementary and the middle schools. Yes?
Thank you. Are these breaking like a couple times a month? When they have to disconnect something and push it back in, are these breaking? Is that what's going on?
So, what, so, what happens with those if they break, since they're so brittle, we get to get creative and figure out a way to put that port into another port. And we're running out of ports because they're breaking. So, this one that, this can hold 48 connections of this much space, but this takes up a lot more space in a networking rack like that than this with the same amount of space. So, it's double the size, but it takes, it takes up at least, it takes up at least more room.
And why would you have to pull out the port of that one? What would make it break?
Yep. So, there's a card back here that's located inside, inside of there that we have to switch out at times.
Okay.
Because if it breaks, you know, we have to like slide it back in, but we can't push it too hard. I can tell you, like, I learned my lesson the hard way is I pushed my thumb right through the whole thing and that's how it, and again, these, this has not been used and this is that brittle. You know, plastic in the heat and the sun, I know it's not saying it's in the sun, but when it's, and it's subjected to that much of heat, it becomes brittle.
Thank you.
So, move on to our software budget. I don't, I'm not going to go on every line because this is the same software as last year that we, the software budget of last year. But our, you know, big expenses are Aspen, which is our student database, our Microsoft renewal, which we rely heavily on every year, and our backup system, unit trends, so that that backs up our file servers and whatnot. Our contract services, so this is what helps keep our district going, I guess. So, this is what we use for support from our vendors to help maintain our phone support, our wiring, because we have wiring requests all the time, our network infrastructure, Aspen updates, and fiber repairs, because all of our buildings are connected through fibers. Fiber is good, but it does need repairs because fiber is a very delicate thing because it's made out of glass tubing. And glass, as we know, breaks. And some of our fibers are really old and so is our connections. So, sometimes we need to have those repaired. So, fiber, since it's such a niche support, it's an expensive repair. Computer equipment, so the criticality of our new computers is number one priorities and spare access points is number two. And with new computers, we would need new monitors as well. So, that's, because we still have a lot of older monitors within our building right now, all the buildings. And with these deployments of new computers, we need help doing it because if we're going to deploy over 1,000 desktops, that's, it's not just putting them in that spot and just plugging it and letting it go. No, these devices have to be, it's called imaging, where we actually put windows and they go to our policy and they go through our services. So, there's a lot to it. And these imaging, this imaging can take anywhere from a half hour to an hour and a half, depending on how much bandwidth is going, is being put towards these machines. So, and, you know, the amount of stuff that is inside the computer, like the hard drive, the RAM, because it does- because it does, it takes a lot of work for a computer to do all these things to get it ready for use. Priorities moving forward, create, number one priority for us is technology plan. And we want to focus on technology and how it impacts learning, professional development, SWOT analysis of staff, budget, and digital citizenship and social-emotional learning. We want to invest in Chromebooks and desktops. Long-term is planning for infrastructure upgrades along with, and that includes wireless. And we want to identify strategies to bridge a gap between curriculum and technology. Items we won't, aren't be able to fund this year are ceiling-mounted projectors and more Chromebook carts. We have limited funds to repair said projectors, and we have no funds to add technology other than computers to classrooms and no elementary classroom phones. We don't have the ability to add elementary classroom phones because of the old wiring right now. So even if we wanted to, we couldn't because of what we have. Questions?
Ms. Timmons, and then Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Bishop.
That was pretty good, Mr. Rodriguez. And thank you for the presentation, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I have one question. I was going to call you today to ask this question because I didn't know the answer to it. But the question was, can a student take home a Chromebook or an iPad?
Depends on if an IAP requires it. We don't, with, so we have to filter devices, right? Like I was saying before, we have to be CIPA compliant. So right now, if a student were to go off of campus, we, in the high schools, yes, but on the middle school and elementary schools, no. Because we don't have the capability for them to have their web searches filtered. So that is a limitation we have right there. But we can figure out a strategy to make it work. There are some cases in the district where we do have that.
Okay, thank you. Now you got your answer. Secondly, this is a question about the Chromebooks. Can we refurbish the Chromebooks? Is it cheaper to refurbish or buy new?
It's, the thing is with refurbished, if we buy refurbished, you're looking at the same thing. Because it's, they still expire at the same time. It doesn't matter if it's refurbished or not. So it's not like a laptop where you can actually put new parts in it and like bring it up to like a grade A or a grade B. It, the, it's, the Chromebooks are a different story with that. So it's kind of like an iPhone. You can buy an old iPhone 4, but it's worth like 20 bucks.
Right, right. But having said that, I got a lot of technology in my house. You come to my house, and I have everything technology. I even got the latest iPhone.
Yep.
I have another question regarding iPads. I have several iPads, and they're older ones. And I got one from generation, the first generation, all the way up to the latest one. The first generation really still work?
Yep.
Because my grandkids work on them all the time. So maybe we should buy iPads instead. I just want your feedback on it.
So with iPads, they're typically three to four times more expensive for one iPad. So we can get four Chromebooks for every one iPad that we buy. There was a push before I even got here to buy a lot of iPads. That's not the case anymore. They're, they're, they're still great, don't get me wrong. But they're used a lot for like assisted learning with special needs students and in the elementary schools. But we don't really see a lot of iPads being used at the middle and the high schools. They're still great, but again, they only go up to, I'm sure your first-gen iPad is probably at software version nine right now, and that's as high as it'll go.
Well, actually, no. I can challenge you on that because all you have to do is upload the new ISO. So, no. It takes a little longer to upload on the first generation versus, of course, the new one. So I have another one. Because I have a lot of questions we got in technology. I was glad that I was on your board. But this, I'm going to skip over all my questions because these guys want to go home. The internship for the summer. The city put out internships for interns for the summer, basically paying exactly what you got up there. And I was wondering if you could feed into that and get people to help out in the summer through the city.
That's something I can talk to Mr. Donovan with, see if we can potentially.
They have quite a few openings.
Yeah, that was a program run for the first time by the city.
Last year, but now, right. And it's running again this year. And he asked, they got the applications out as we speak for kids that want to go into an intern program. So maybe that can help out with us this summer, you know.
I'll check with whoever runs that at the city. Do you know who runs it?
Mayor Don just run it, really.
I'm sure someone else runs it.
Yeah, it's office. I mean, with Kim Kleiner gone, her assistant, made the new Kim Kleiner, I don't know her name, may run it, Dr. Mosley?
Cheryl Limner, I think, that's her.
Okay.
I think it's Cheryl. That maybe would be helpful. I don't think the mayor runs it himself.
No, I know he doesn't run it himself. It runs out his office, though. And they go through his office for interviews, so.
Yeah, I think it's Cheryl. I believe it's Cheryl.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Bishop.
Okay. First of all, your presentation made me very sad.
I'm sorry.
It's just.
Oh, geez, can be sometimes doom and gloom.
And so I have a simple question first, and then a more complicated one. In the second-to-last slide about the priorities, I don't know what SWOT analysis of staff means, what that acronym means.
I think it's strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
So it's a form of doing an assessment on your environment. So when we did the strategic plan, we actually did what's called a SWOT analysis. So we changed it up a little bit, but we, it's, the term is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Using the word threat, and this, it was a term probably about 20 years ago, prior to school catastrophes and stuff. So really, replacing that word threat with the word challenges is better and sounds less, you know, threatening, so to speak. And we use that to really create priorities for focus groups and also opportunities in terms of prioritization, in this case, for technology.
Okay, thank you. So I know that you mentioned that Amherst Street is in good shape. But I don't recall in your presentation like a good news page about some labs that are going to be fine for maybe the next two to five years. Or I understand about the Chromebooks, and there is shelf life. I know that. But I just wonder if somewhere in the district there are some schools that have labs or offices or even classrooms that don't need all of this right away? Or is everything really getting too old?
We, I should have, you know, put a bow on some pages, or at least added that into, and I'll take that into consideration for next year. We do have a good amount of labs. I can't, I don't know the number off the top of my head, that do have updated equipment in it. So it's not, it, that, however, the proportion of updated equipment to not updated equipment is not like where it should be. So, for example, so Fairgrounds Middle School has, they have two labs in their building. One is as updated, the other one isn't. So, and there's a difference in what, you know, and I worked in that school. So I know, like, you know, the problems in one building, or problems in one room, and then the problems in the other. So it's, they are in some rooms, but not in every, not in others. And Amherst, the reason why Amherst is, what I was showing you, the patch panels have been updated because that's the smallest school. So they have one closet with one cabinet. So that, that to us, it was done, I believe, last summer. That was, that could have been done to see what it would look like and what it would take to actually get that done. So I should have brought a picture, but it's extremely nice compared to what we have right now in the other, in the other buildings.
Okay, and then I just have one comment. I'm a retired school librarian, but I've worked for many months in three of our elementary schools. And part of my job was also teaching technology classes. Sometimes it was a full day a week. And so I've worked with Chromebooks. I've worked with iPads, and I've worked with the aging desktops. And I found the Chromebooks far superior and found the iPads to be really tricky for a lot of the kids. And that's just my experience. So I just wanted to share that.
Well, my grandkids do really well. I don't care. They're okay with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bishop?
So I don't do technology. You ladies are amazing. I have cracked tablets at home that the kids use. Just got cable. Don't let me go near a photocopier because I will look at it, and it will break. With that said, I have broken a lot of stuff and gone through a lot of laptops and a lot of desktops because I'm magic. But they typically, in the other jobs that I've had, is they replace as they need to. Like, as I've officially broken something is when it gets replaced. And I don't know if that's something we would be able to look at with the Chromebooks is, I mean, obviously, it would be the same amount of money, but really push the life expectancy, like, really kill those things before we replace them.
The thing is, if we, they would, the most we could go to those would be September 2021. Because it's not the, it's not the actual physical device, it's the software that is able to be used on the device.
Is that why my laptop at home doesn't work anymore?
Probably.
Yes.
And the Cathy is important, too. Yeah, good, I'll let you guys handle this one because it makes no sense to me.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm a little bit more savvy than you are. I love my iPads. How many desktops do we actually need?
For this, let's see. To bring us out of the six-to-10-year range, 1046.
How many?
1,046.
1,046. And how many Chromebooks do we need?
3,140.
3,140.
Yep, and that's for next fall. After, so, but there's another big, big group of Chromebooks going out in September 2022. But after that, the next expiration cycle is 2026. So we have four years of longer use for our Chromebooks after that. So these, these next two years are going to, are going to be rough in terms of Chromebooks going expiring.
Mr. Donovan, do we have a price for all these in our sheets here? Maybe I'm missing it, or couldn't you get it for us?
Yeah, a Chromebook costs between $165 and $180, depending on when you buy it. And then they have, what is it, $20 or $25 for a license fee. So we just use $200 as a round number. That'll get you the Chromebook and the license.
And what about the desktops? What kind of desktops do we use?
Right now, we use HP ProBook 600, I mean, not ProBook, I'm sorry, ProDesk 600. So G4, so this is the fourth, G4 is the fourth generation of this desktop.
These aren't laptops, these are just desktops.
Desktops, right, yeah.
Why aren't we using laptops? Or why aren't we using an all-in-one computer, like an HP all-in-one?
The HP all-in-ones are complicated to fix because they are in, all the stuff is in one. So it's in a monitor. So if you have a monitor and, you know, things do break, you have to replace the entire unit. And those, I don't know off the top of my head, but they're probably well over 1,000. Whereas laptops are also, you got to worry more about lost, and lost, losing, replacing, and drops with laptops because you don't typically see a teacher pick up a desktop and drop it. They're usually a little more durable. Whereas a dropped laptop, not only are they more expensive, but they're not as mobile. So, and we keep desktops in the rooms for substitutes as well because they're not assigned devices, and they can take attendance with a desktop in the room by using a username.
And how much does it cost for the computers?
Right now, I believe the desktop is $594, I want to say. $594, $596.
So $596 plus a license?
No, not for desktops, that's just for Chromebooks.
So, and what about the software?
Software, we buy, so that's our Microsoft license. So we, it's a, it's a volume-based licensing for our Microsoft. So that includes like Office and the Windows activation.
Okay, so around the computer, up to about $600 a computer. And so that's the cheapest we can get it? Do we, where do we get all our equipment from?
We buy HP. We like to keep our, so what's good in IT is to keep devices standard across the board. So because, just like, just like people, computers can be temperamental, especially by brand. So if we have a mixed environment with Dell's, Lenovo's, HP's, then we can run into problems. Because, just because Microsoft sends an update, it might not interact as well with a certain brand. So that's, for our purposes, we buy HP because we feel like it's the best. And we get it, we get our, through our supplier, IT insiders in Nashua.
So is that the best, so we put out an RFP? Do we put out bids for these to see who's going to give us the best price when we're buying them in bulk? How are we negotiating this? So we get the best deal for the school system? Because if we need to buy 1,046 computers and 3,140 Chromebooks, then we really need to get a good deal. If we need to get this within a year from September, then we better be putting our pennies aside and figuring out what we're going to be doing with this budget because we've got a lot to weigh, which is the most important. If computers is at the top of our list now, then I want to make sure we have negotiated the best deal at the best price here.
Just historically, what we've done, we don't typically have this sort of a large amount that we have to buy all at once. But what we do every May slash June, we go out for bid, and we get prices on the computers. And then we'll purchase it from that vendor for the year. So they'll give us a price. The price doesn't go up. The price may go down. But that's what we do now. But typically, the numbers that we're talking here, we don't, we've never bought 3,100 Chromebooks in any, any year. We've been buying them over time. We've had grant money. We've had a lot of different sources of purchases. That's the one thing with the Chromebooks. A lot of the Chromebooks were purchased back about four years ago with grant money. That money's no longer there, so.
So after this, well, we're going to be buying a large amount now. So you're talking three to four years. When this is no longer, is outdated, then there's going to be another big purchase, rather than staggering it out like over like two years, two years, two years, or what, three years? So we're not stuck in this big purchase like we are now. So what are we going to do to kind of stagger it out? So in four years, when whoever's left on this board, you know, doesn't get, you know, come up with the same, I hate to say that, you know, but who knows who's going to run again, you know? That we don't come up with this same big purchase price, you know?
I think that there's been, we have to acknowledge that there's been some budget challenges in the past. And so as a result of that, we purchase, as a district, Chromebooks that have a short lifespan. So what we're proposing this year is to make better investments in our Chromebooks initially so they last a longer lifespan. And that's not a criticism of the previous board or even the administration. It's just that they had to do the best they can, given their limited finance. I think the bigger question is that, and this will come out in the technology plan, we don't know what five years from now looks like. If you asked our kids, most of our kids at the high schools have cellphones. And they're using these devices. Not, most of us here type on a computer or type on some Chromebook. That's not the case for some of our kids. They use their phones. And so part of it is, you know, the question is going to become in five years, we may sit here in front of you and say, we don't want to order any more Chromebooks, but instead, we want to improve our infrastructure to allow our kids to connect quickly and more accurately using their phones. I think the question is, and it's a good point, what is a computer lab? And I think that's going to come on the technology plan because to me, this room's a computer lab. All we need to do is roll in a computer card. To Sharon's point, when she was a librarian, All we need to do is roll in a computer cart, to Sharon's point, when she was a librarian. Her library was not just a library for books, but also an environment to support technology, which was a computer lab. I think that we're, we're gonna be using space very differently. I think we have to think about our infrastructure and constantly, what I say, upgrading our infrastructure in terms of our highways. We have to recognize that most kids now do not just have one cellphone. Most kids now have multiple devices that they're using to connect to our, our internet. If, to give an analogy, it just feels like every kid has two cars that they can drive on the highway at the same time.
Can I just respond to that, please?
Sure. Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Brown. Go, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, for clarifying that. And again, we don't know what's gonna happen in four to five years. And in four to five years, they might have this speed-of-lightning computer out there and a Chromebook that can do everything for you. But just looking down the road here for future, so we don't, even if we have to continue this path in classrooms, that we don't get stuck again, that all of a sudden a big purchase has to come out. And so that's what my whole point was, that how do we, you know, make sure we stagnate it if this is the path that we continue to have to go down in the school? So that was my whole point. Thank you very much.
Ms. Brown and Ms. Bishop.
So this is kind of related to the same sort of thing, specifying the quality of materials that we're buying through the Chromebooks. I like that we're keeping kind of a PC operating system. I think from a curriculum standpoint, it's good for kids because they can access Google Docs and things from home and work together on, I mean, my kids can be doing a live chat while editing a document with other kids on, for group projects, I think that's fantastic. And I think learning on Google Docs is better for long-term workforce, using word processing and different kinds of applications moving forward, spreadsheets and whatnot. But my question is about choosing Chromebooks, which are one unit, not really modifiable, as opposed to something that can be upgraded on the hardware system? Is that, is, I'm sure you know this, is it more economical to do that? Or is it just, is it better to buy a less expensive device with, that can't be modified? Or to get something that's modified?
Yes and no. Since the Chromebooks are, they're essentially like an iPhone, you can't upgrade like an iPhone with new hardware. So we can fix the parts inside, but we can necessarily upgrade the parts inside. With Google's standard of, you know, with their auto-update policy going to six years, that's, that's encouraging, that's helpful for us because the time, you know, the time crunch we have isn't four years anymore, three and a half years, it's now, it's now six. But, you know, for the cost of a laptop that we see, it's, you're, you're looking at, and I don't know the price of a laptop, but I'm ballpark, seven to eight hundred dollars. So you, you can buy, you know, three and a half to one, you know, can you, can you reach more students and more staff with three, three and a half Chromebooks? I mean, not the half, but you know what I mean? But then with one laptop. So the, so it's kind of like, we need to reach more students and more staff and, and look at more of a, that's the, the economic side of it.
It's about the volume.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Kind of like the buffet of, of computing devices.
Let's see, my, I have two more questions. The next one was, do we contract out the panel upgrades? Do we do that? Or is that work that your department is gonna have to do by themselves?
We do contract the panel upgrades for that, because it's, the volume is so high and the, I mean, I would love to show you in person, every one of you, like, what we have and what needs to be upgraded, but it, it's a lot. We have hundreds and hundreds of connections per school. And that's, to do that, it's, you would, you would need a team to do it, and that would just suck the resources out of the department. Because we have, you know, just, we can get 30 to 50 helpdesk tickets a day, and if we have them deployed at each school, snipping a wire, putting them in the right order, then punching them down, like, that's just one process. One, one patch could take five minutes, so. And if you're thinking, talking hundreds and hundreds, that's what we're facing right there, so.
That makes good sense to me. And finally, it's kind of back to the internship thing you mentioned. Also, have you considered, like, just student help? Maybe we could even offer course credit for your lab setup kind of labor? I mean, they do it at, at the collegiate level, we should, the kids probably could handle it.
They'd love to take into consideration, we, you know, free labor.
They earn, they're earning something, it's earning.
They're earning experience, right. I hear you.
Ms. Bishop and then Ms. Oden.
So, would I, because I'm not technologically savvy, one of the things that I worry about is, I mean, my kids are the kids who are like, oh, we have to do our reports on our computer or on our phones because mom won't upgrade the laptop. Because, because I am not a technology person, I don't see a lot of value in it in my house because we just kind of sit down, I mean, we still play board game, we're lame. But it's also an expense for us that I can't stay on top of having the most up-to-date equipment. I know there are a lot of other families in Nashua that are in the same position. If I'm picking between, you know, a tank of oil and a computer, I'm gonna go with the oil. If, there are two parts of this, making sure that kind of everything's equal across the board, that the, the work that we want kids to be able to do, that they can't only do it in school, because I think that puts a restriction on their growth, which I know I'm doing to my kids, sorry, guys. But also, if the opportunity were to be there, if we were contracting or negotiating for more computers, if we open this up to families to purchase the same kind of Chromebooks at the district price, and then we can increase students' availability of these resources at home, and they can do more self-regulation and homework and the stuff that makes for independent learners, would that be an option to open up to every parent or every family member instead of just hoping?
That's definitely something to consider, too, yeah. We, we are open to suggestions on any way for, to get a device into a student's hand. So I, I think we're coming from the same spot with that. In terms of your, I guess, your take on technology, we...
I don't have a DVD player. That's probably not a good thing. Like, that's how technologically.
That's old.
It is old. Okay, good. Upgraded.
I, I understand, like, we, we want, we want students to, you know, and we, we use Google, right? And Google can be accessed through even a regular Windows PC. They just have to sign in with their student, with their username that they use here, and they can access everything they can, they can access on a laptop, their phone, and, and on their Chromebook, so.
Yeah, mine, mine do that, I think that's really neat.
Yeah.
So that's it, just more accessibility.
And then Ms. Zim.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. You're hiring summer help. I know we used to hire, I think, six to eight students to go around the district and clean computers. And often I'd be in my classroom when I was teaching in the summer, and I'd be talking to the young person who came in to clean the machine, and they often were from other areas. They were not Nashua students. One was from 25 miles away. Is your philosophy to hire Nashua students to do this?
We, so, a lot of it's fit, too. So we, we have students who are typically college-age, and we do interview these students. It's not just first come, first served. So we want to make sure the students are getting our hard workers because we have run it into the past where we have taken local and students or interns from outside of the city, and it just didn't work out. You know, just like any position, it's a matter of fit and, and hard work. Can you do the job for us, you know, what we're asking you to do? Because we do have, like, we rely heavily on them for the summer, for all of our summer projects because they're involved in everything, and we keep them abreast of what is going on. So we do, we do look at Nashua's students, but again, it's, it's fit and, and are they gonna be hard workers for us?
Okay, thank you. I forgot what my second question was. Thank you, sorry.
I'll, I'll come back to you if you think of, think of it.
Thank you. Next week? Your grandma, tie it.
Ms. Zim.
Several, several years ago, when I was on the board, it seemed to me that we got, going back to Mr. Donovan's comment, that we got a lot of grants. And I think it was tied up with E-Rates. I'm, I'm trying to remember, wasn't, isn't that E-Rate part of the grant, or was it?
So E-Rate is, is something different. So E-Rate is, we get, we qualify, it's through schools and libraries, and it's, there are two different types, it's Form 470 and then it's 471. 470 is for our internet connection. So we get a discount rate with our connection, and this is all tied into school lunches. So we get a 65% discount rate on, because we have so many students on free and reduced lunch. So the, and 471 is for, like, stuff that's inside of the building. So access points, network projects, all those things that provide connectivity to students and devices. So that those, that's not a grant, it's just a, it's a program for the government. I guess you couldn't, like, have, it's a discount, yeah, for assistance for schools.
Funny, call it anything. It's good, we need lots of it. So my question is, are we max, I, I remember the student director, a previous director that we had of technology, something, we lost him, wonderful man. But he was quite good at, that's how I remember, that he was, that he excelled at getting as much as he could possibly get out of that E-Rate. And because I know how limited our dollars are, I, I'm, I guess I'm asking you if you're familiar with that process, if you're maximizing that, if there's anything we can do to make it more fluid?
We, so we are maximizing it through a consultant. And the consultant is relatively inexpensive. We, we pay her, I believe, 3,800 dollars a year, roughly around that amount. So, and she takes care of all of our, our forms filling out. So we work, her and I work very closely together, so we're in the portal together filling out forms, and she, she's a, an E-Rate expert. So we use, we rely heavily on her because it's so, the process is so involved and so time-consuming.
Government, government, that's what they do well.
And the rules are changing every, every cycle for that. So we want to make sure that we, we do get it right because this is a lot of money at stake. So the project we're doing for the, a network infrastructure upgrade at the high school and the wireless is through E-Rate, and she helped us through that process.
But there are not grants, going again to, the grants are pretty much nonexistent now, Mr. Donovan?
Well, there was, there was about a million dollars in the Title I grant back about four years ago. So that was carryover money. Right now, we're probably more efficient with our grants, and we're using it on things like teachers and books and, and PD and things. So we're not gonna have these large carryovers. That was really sort of a one-time thing. Now, we do have the new grant writer. I'm not 100% sure what she's working on right now, but that's something you could look for separately.
Is she just for the school district, or is she for...
No, she's half for the city, half for the school district.
And finally, I would just like to, thank you for that advocate. I would just like to say that at the top of my mind is that when you're talking about technology, 600 dollars, half of the children in the city of Nashville cannot afford, at least half, could not afford a 600 dollar computer and do not have 600 dollar computers. And I have to say that I, that I'm just, I would just like to say, as leaders in the community, we need to keep those children in our minds and in our conscious thinking so that as we're able to, we can be confident that they're getting an opportunity. Without technology tomorrow, you'll be lost. And, I mean, we're already lost. If you don't have a telephone today, as, and I so appreciated Dr. Mosley's comments, they were, they were very timely. So, but I, I just hope that as a board, we'll always try to keep these kids who, who come from poverty. In Nashville, we have, I think, at least 50%. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I hope the grant writer can find 1.2 million dollars for the computers.
Me, too.
Because I was calculating, for 1,046 HPs, that came to 627,600 dollars. And for 3,140 Chromebooks, that's 628,000 dollars. I just rounded it at 1.2 million. If this is what we're gonna need, I mean, it's probably not gonna hit this budget, or maybe part of this can hit, I don't, I know, Ms. Zim, don't look at me like that. But, you know, a half or a quarter, whatever, we start replacing. So as the next cycle comes, we're not killing ourselves to, you know, 1.2 million dollars. So between maybe now and next budget season, we can get that grant writer to really push to get us some money for the computers and the Chromebooks. Thank you.
Just quickly, too, we'll be talking next week about some one-time money, which might help us with that, so.
That's good.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Rodriguez. We have a lot of information and a lot of decisions coming up. Thank you.
And welcome to the district. We look forward to getting to know you and working with you.
Likewise. Thank you.
And I told him he didn't have to dress in a suit next time he came, all right?
I wanted to say that he does have a good sense of humor.
Next up, we have curriculum with Dr. McKinney.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Here's the curriculum budget presentation for fiscal year 2021. Just an overview, our curriculum budget covers some of the needs for the 11,000-plus students we have in the district, over 1,000 teachers, 40 power professionals, the administrators and directors. The main goal of the budget is to support all the curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional development. As I go through this presentation, I'll be talking about those four areas and providing an update and some curriculum initiatives, as well as the budget. The budget rationale, the budget is built around these five things. Early childhood education intervention, getting to kids early and getting their needs met, providing a curriculum that's aligned around a growth mindset with levels of support and challenge, high-quality instruction with tiered levels of support, assessing the learning rate and growth of all our students, and providing professional development for all our educators. And when I say educators, I, I mean, again, the power professionals, the teachers, the administrators. So over the last number of years, we've invested in early education, early childhood education intervention, so all our students are ready to, to succeed. I first started with the beginning of full-day kindergarten. We've really worked to have equity with the supplies that the teachers have and their schedules, so they have the same amount of planning time as some of their other counterparts. We're looking to add some power professionals. We have a screening tool that's really helped us in placing students in the beginning of the year and having balanced classes. Previously, they would register, we'd sign them up to a class, and we'd kind of go into the first weeks of school and kind of see what happens. This gives us an opportunity to let us know the students' readiness for the kindergarten, being independent, and balancing out the classes for our teachers. Our Title I schools do blast off to kindergarten over the summer, so students can get ready for that transition into kindergarten. We have our Title I preschool. I think we're in our second or third year of Power Scholars, which is a great opportunity for our students who need support over the summer and prevent summer learning loss. And I think we're on our third or fourth year of a summer kindergarten institute. They all come together for one day. We do some professional development, play-based learning. They're a great collaborative group that share practices together. And last year, we were able to give them a lot of materials thanks to the support of the Nashville Education Foundation for Play-Based Learning, which was a nice surprise for them. Just an update in the curriculum areas. So for the main four areas in ELA, as you know, we've had a lot of new literacy materials put in, so we're monitoring implementation, the mini lessons, the IRA kits, the guided reading materials, and Lucy Cawkins in writing. In the middle school, we're continuing with Study Sync. We're making refinements along the way, but we're also getting a request to pilot Lucy Cawkins in the middle school and work on writing with our middle school students, which would be a nice opportunity for continuum of the same sort of program and philosophy, K-8. Our high schools are continuing to work with vertical alignment from the middle school all the way through graduation, and we're collecting proposals for summer curriculum work revisions, rewriting, and professional development. Our English Language Arts Steering Committee, I apologize for the abbreviation, is working on competency-based education, kind of the philosophy. Our high school is kind of way ahead. Our middle school is in traditional grading, and our elementary's at standards-based grading, so we're trying to do some kind of preliminary background knowledge on where we are, where we're going, and why. But that group has K-12 representation on it, from teachers to curriculum team members, administrators, and we're working on, again, updating curriculum and how can we assess the learning rate of our students' growth and have common assessments across the district? So one school isn't doing one thing, and another school is doing something else. In mathematics, you know, we talked, we had a presentation before about Eureka, K-8. So we purchase the consumables for students, K-6, the workbooks. A lot of the other materials that are used, we print, the teachers print themselves. So the homework... So the homework, the sprints, and some of the things that are sent home are printed and copied in the schools. We use a digital suite, so if you're a new teacher and you've never taught your Eureka Way, they can go online and get a kind of quick tutorial on how it's going to be presented. And we're also looking at Great Minds Affirm. It's an online digital assessment tool. And basically, what it does for teachers, it takes all of the mid and end-of-year modules, has them online. And for our older students, they can take it, it scores it, grades it, and lets them know how they're doing. It's basically digitizing the practice that we already have in place. Again, for high school, our math team is working on vertical alignment. And our big challenge there is process and procedure for acceleration. We have a lot of students who want to fly through, for lack of a better term, by taking V-Lax courses. So where's the appropriate balance between classroom instruction with a teacher versus online instruction and providing credit for students? And then how do we accelerate students through, if you're really two or more grade levels ahead, how can we give you that instruction? I guess it's a little challenging at the middle and the high school level. And again, MSC is the Mass Steering Committee that meets four times a year. In science, we're looking to eventually implement the recommendations from the science pilot. I anticipate those coming to the Curriculum and Evaluation Committee within the next two months. At the middle school level, we've been doing professional development on next-gen science standards, and we're reviewing the implementation of Amplify, what's working, what's not, how can we continuously improve that program. The high school is doing a lot of professional development on next-gen, as well as alignment from the middle through the high school. And both our science and social studies committees, I call them our curriculum cabinet, but that would be elementary coaches, our middle coaches, and the high school head teachers meet with myself and Mrs. Fitzpatrick, and we kind of plan what needs to happen over the summer. What revisions do we make, or what kind of PD should we plan ahead for, for our teachers? Social studies is kind of on hold right now. We're waiting for the state to eventually issue the new state standards and frameworks, and then we can work to, if necessary, realign our curriculum, make some adoption changes or whatever, and also try to make connections with English Language Arts, particularly for our elementary teachers. There's just not enough time in the day. So if we can find ways to make thematic connections and save teachers' time, that's certainly something that I'm sure they would appreciate that we're looking into. Middle school, they've already done some common alignment and assessments, and their scope and sequence, and the same thing for the high school and the steering committees. In regards to instruction, we're trying to provide a high-quality instruction for all students across the three tiers. You've heard about multi-tiered systems of support with the grant that we have. So we're not only looking to have that in instruction, but also for behavior and social-emotional well-being. We're providing ongoing assessments, so we screen students, and we do progress monitoring in the elementary schools. You heard of Fuentes and Pennell and benchmark assessments, so we monitor the rate of reading growth for students. So we're trying to clarify which tiers are what, what programs do we use, and what are those interventions, and are they working? This year, with assessment, with the new strategic plan, we've sent school data to the building-based instructional leadership teams for them to review their school data, iReady, state assessments, other data. They meet with their teams, and they're going to provide feedback to the district on what's working, what's not working, what resources do you need, and what suggestions do you have for the future. So their deadline is the end of April, so I anticipate coming to CNE in May and June and providing an update on any changes to our assessment program. And we're continuing to work on competency-based education, so we kind of have one system consistently across the district. Kids, parents, teachers all know the same language, practice, and everything. We're doing PD right now for some of our elementary. Our grade-level groups are getting together. This will be a topic for CNE next week. And our middle school is doing middle school steering, some summer work around this area. TeacherEas is at the elementary school, and that's an online gradebook that teachers can grade, assess students, and it reports out progress. So we can do our progress reports and report cards. Instead of the old red rank book and copying things back and forth, this is a live platform that teachers can assign work, kids can go and do their homework, not their homework, but take a quiz or a test, grades it, scores it, and the teacher can analyze the results. So we're trying to work with the steering committees and come around with a balanced assessment, administration, and collection that doesn't seem overwhelming at times and balances between instructional time and testing time. And we're continuing to work on vertical and horizontal alignment. So we provide professional development. Our two guiding documents are the Professional Development Master Plan. We've also made some changes to that document that'll be coming to CNE. That's a joint labor commission between the teachers and the administration. So together, collaboratively, we've recommended some changes, so we're re-bringing those forward. And last year, we made some changes to TDEC, how we observe and evaluate our teachers. Those are our main rubrics, which we have domains for pretty much every area of teaching, from general education, special education, SLPs, OT, PT, the whole nine yards. But the budget provides conferences, summer institutes. We coordinate what happens for teachers and powers on early release days and the in-service days. And we have a great onsite graduate leadership cohort going right now with about over 20 Nashville teachers getting their masters or CAGs in educational leadership. Here are the main three funding sources in the operating, I mean, for the curriculum budget overall. There's the operating budget, our Title II budget, which is for preparing and training, recruiting, high-quality teachers and administrators. And then the new Title IV-A grant that came online last year, which is academic student support and enrichment. And that's mainly geared around well-rounded education, social-emotional learning, and technology. Did I get all of them?
Effective use of technology.
So those grants, and we'll talk, actually, you have a sheet in your packet that outlines what we've been able to do. We've given a lot more funding and support to the UAs, our music, PE, and library, some help to world language, some of our other key areas as well. I just want to highlight additional funding requests included in the first presentation is around additional kindergarten power professionals. We're trying to provide intervention so all the students are ready to succeed. This year, we have about 40 kindergarten classrooms with 22 powers. Trying to balance out the ratios, I think many of the teachers would tell you, we could probably have a power professional in each classroom. I do get feedback on the transition of kids that are in either our Purple Panther or our neat pre-K classrooms, the step from being in, you know, a pre-K classroom with 10 to 12 students, three powers and one teacher, to being in a kindergarten classroom with one teacher, 20 students. That's a big step for a lot of our kids, and those are the ones that we know. Certainly, the X-factor is the kids who register and may not have been in a school-structured setting. They are taking longer to transition into kindergarten, and the needs of those students, we're finding many of them require intervention within the first month. So they're invaluable. At the same token, we are experiencing at times a challenge in recruiting power professionals. It's, they're invaluable, but it's kind of a thankless position. So that is one of the things that we struggle with, is finding the right ones. And when you find them, the teachers won't let them go, but I think we're still exploring ways, how do we find people who are willing to come and really make a difference, but may not have the highest rate of pay, particularly in this economy, working in other places? So we are looking into that, and I think at some point, we have a proposal to bring to the board as well. So that's my last slide. I would also, while I'm here, I'm not going to pass up the opportunity to advocate for an additional elementary assistant principal at Broad Street in New Surals. Broad Street is a challenging place with some of the behavior programs there, so they certainly could use administrative support. And Mrs. Talbot is a wonderful principal at New Surals, but she has quite the gamut there, from preschool to intensive needs classrooms and basically another school on top of that, and could use the help and support. So with that, Ms. Fitzpatrick, do you want to add anything?
I was just going to address, because I know this has been a concern of many of the board members. I know that we're facing an issue with the Chromebooks, but I have already spoken to the state with the Title IV-A grant, and I am going to be purchasing, well, not me personally, but we are going to be purchasing two Chromebook cards per middle school, specifically for middle school science, to support the Amplify program. And last year, we got Chromebook cards for the world language departments at the high schools, and this year, we're doing social studies for the two high schools. So I know it's not 3,000 Chromebooks, but we are trying to address it a little at a time with the money that we do have available to us.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding the curriculum budget? Ms. Brown?
How many Chromebooks are on a cart?
25.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes, Dr. McKinney, I do have a question regarding delay in social studies. Is why can't something be filled into the curriculum of the state? Why are we delaying teaching social studies?
Dr. McKinney, does it suffice to say it's political?
Truthfully. Why are we delaying?
Ms. Timmons, there's been a delay in the release of those standards. There was a committee who did some of the initial work. It was proposed to the commissioner. The commissioner wanted to see some changes, sent it back to committee, and that's where it's been for a period of time. I do anticipate it going out to public comment. There's been some educator feedback around that. So I think we're getting closer. We do have one or two teacher reps that are part of this process, but I appreciate your question in that, you know, releasing that helps us align our curriculum and make the revisions we need. So we're kind of in this holding pattern without it. So when we know, I will certainly let the board know.
Thank you.
Ms. Zim?
On one of your slides, there was the number of 11,000 students. When I left the board, I think we were over 12 and almost, is that 11,000 where we are now with, we've lost, wow, we lost a lot of students, huh?
We've been, I think if you look in tonight's handouts, the questions, I think Ms. Johnson asked that question, so you can see over the last five years, we've probably lost an average around 80 students a year. So yeah, I mean, 13,000 was a while ago, but during your last term, maybe the beginning of it, the beginning of it, we may have been about 12,000.
Say I'm old, it's all right, I know it.
That's what they tell me in the office now, too, so.
And I would, I would just, with the 40 classes and the 22 powers, I look at that number and I say, well, my grandson was at Dr. Crisp, and they had four, as I remember, kindergarten classes, and they had one power professional that I remember. So is that because some of those powers might be one-on-one with an IEP kind of stuff? Or do kindergarten kids have IEPs? So that's probably the answer, right?
So if you look to Appendix 5F, it does give an outline of where the power professionals are. And these would be specifically assigned power professionals for kindergarten in the operating budget. Certainly, schools that have additional funding sources like Title I can have additional powers there. We're trying to get to a place, regardless of the funding for Title I and priorities, that contractually, kind of the benchmark, or before we had half-day kindergarten, was half-day of supportive of a power professional for every full-day 1.0 teacher. So we're trying to get to that balance. I mean, ideally, it would be one-to-one, a para and a teacher in every classroom.
No, and that wasn't a complaint. I think they went above and beyond what I could have asked for. So I certainly, that was not intended in any way. I have only the highest regard for all of the services that we've gotten for him through, with the best special education in the state, I'm convinced of it. So, thank you.
If I could just...
Go ahead.
Can I just add to that? Certainly, Title I powers are a part of that, but then there are certainly students who transition from pre-K into kindergarten, and then the allotments from special education are kind of added to this in terms of kids that need additional support, as outlined in their IEP, would have a power professional in there to help those students as well. So we're trying to provide as many resources as we can. Like I said earlier, I think that the challenge is the known kids, I think we know about, it's the unknown students that we have, both either registering or moving in. That's a considerable challenge to meet, because you kind of, you know, a lot of our teachers and administrators like to plan for the year. These are kids that you just really can't plan for. We use what we have to try to meet their needs and then kind of go through the years as best we can.
And I remember, if I may, back, of course, it has been, I think I was off the board almost two years. So, but the books at the high school, I remember as being especially, I want to use the term Forgive me. I'm asking you if the books, some of the books at the high school were dated, they were very, very dated.
The textbooks?
The textbooks.
So I can speak to, for example, world language. They really wanted to move away from textbooks because the way you teach world languages now has changed. And by using the computers and being able to go online and have an interactive piece, kids are learning conversational languages in a much better way than they used to. And the traditional, if you think back, they used to spend a lot of time learning grammar of a foreign language and writing of a foreign language, and that is a piece of it. But it's more about learning that if you go to France, for example, you will be able to carry on a conversation in French. And so the way they teach world languages has evolved, and textbooks in that respect are obsolete. It's not to say they never use paper references, but a lot of the learning takes place online.
If I can just speak to that, you're right, they are obsolete. And the question really is, what do we, do we really want to go out and spend thousands of dollars on books? And part of what, we talked a little bit about, is about the technology. Most of our kids are reading their books from right here. And this is a good thing, because they can update the books and update the editions. So we're questioning, once you buy a book, it's a book, it's permanent. But if you buy this, and we have subscriptions to, like, Experiments, Khan Academy, different ways of solving algebraic equation calculus, all of these things are now not just permanent in a book. So a book, we may spend less money on a book that complements the technology that goes with the curriculum.
So, but there is, just a question on that, so there is an expense, though, to going online?
Oh, absolutely. There is a subscription expense, you know, and there are some things that are never going to change. Our kids read Knight by Yelena Sel, they read Catcher in the Rye. I mean, all these classics are never going to, you know, update those things. That's just, you know, part of the curriculum. But when we talk about some of the things around, particularly around, I would say, science, algebra, those types of, that discipline, they don't tend, if they buy a book, it complements the technology and not the other way around.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown had her hand up.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
I just had two things.
Yep.
5E in your packet shows the materials that we purchased this year, either through operating and operating and grant funds. And then the other appendices, 5D, is kind of a forecast where we try to budget for those subject areas and replacing the instructional materials. But, Mrs. Ziem, to your point, I think when the budget was at a place where it could meet the needs of the district, and with some turnover, we did experience over the last couple of years, people coming and asking for help and support with the instructional materials. So not just textbooks, but how can we give them newer materials? So we meet with the curriculum team, the curriculum cabinets, the head teachers. A lot of them are very experienced shoppers and can get us what we need, whether it's the textbooks, online materials, and meet the needs. And we do have times where, you know, we have more kids taking algebra a year, we have to buy some extra books. We just do those sort of things, so everybody has the resources they need, but.
Well, and going to your point, I remember, it was very, I should add him, the president of the union. I remember when I was on the board, he raised money to personally give every child in his classroom a Chromebook. I remember that because I was so impressed. That was when I was young and dumb on the board, now I'm old and dumb. But I was very touched that our teachers would go, would even have to go to that extreme. I mean, they shouldn't have to do that, but that he cared enough to do it was very moving, and I'm sure we have a lot of teachers who are doing similar things that I'm not lucky enough to know about. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions for curriculum budget? I want to thank Dr. McKinney and Ms. Fitzpatrick. Our next meeting, our next budget meeting is next week, Wednesday, March 11th, at 6:30. So if we don't have any other business or comments, we could, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:52.